This meeting to order. I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation for the good, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk may take a roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Dundon.
Present.
Councilmember Strong.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Council President Medavetzky.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, we will begin by approving the minutes from the business meeting on February 24th, 2024. Do I have?
I'll make the motion to.
Twenty-eight. Sorry.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope, okay, thank you. Appointments. Commission on the Conservation of the Environment. Um, do we need to take a vote on this one? Um, is there anyone who would like to nominate a chair?
I would nominate Luke Day to be the Chair of the Environmental Commission.
I second.
Okay, um, we can take a vote.
So Member Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky.
Yes.
Uh, aye.
Seven, zero.
Okay, great, thank you. Planning Commission, we have Kyle Nedlich, we, um, didn't have his name on our list last time, um, so apologies for that, um, so we'll like to, uh, the name came that was nominated by the mayor, um, we need to take a vote on appointing Kyle.
Councilmember Porter.
Nay.
Councilmember Middleton.
Nay.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
So Member Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky.
Aye.
That is three, four. Ayes, haven't.
Okay, motion passes. Or the appointment passes, um.
Can I make a motion to do a reconsideration vote? On from our last business meeting, we, um, voted on, uh, Chris and Emmanuel to be a part of the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Like, make a motion to recon- do a reconsideration vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, so, uh, discussion, I guess?
I don't have any.
So, yeah, I mean, I can, I can explain.
Councilman Hotchkiss.
Yeah, again, I think it would be prudent for us to take a little bit more time to consider these appointments, I don't think we, we had a chance to interview or, um, I don't know if you guys follow the Planning Commission meetings very closely, um, I think there's, there, there's reason to like have a, um, a more thorough discussion about who, who sits on the Planning Commission, um, and that's why I want to reconsider that vote.
Further discussion.
I'm in strong.
So what's the, what's the vote, just to literally take them off, or? Can you, I don't, I just, it's more of a point of order, can you actually do that without?
Okay. No, that's not. We're looking up a process matter here.
Yeah.
I would say, do you want to let people know what the process matter is?
Yeah, she might not be able to.
I guess the question is whether or not a work session meeting counts as a succeeding regular meeting or not. So whether this being the next business meeting is.
I don't feel like we ever vote at work sessions.
Yes, that's, well, yes, that's is the argument to think that the language here, um, in the charter that we're looking at about the next succeeding regular meeting would refer are the interpretation that it would be this business meeting versus whether or not it is a work session.
Let's breathe them.
Point of order. Did Councilman Hotchkiss vote for the appointment last meeting?
The motion to reconsider must come from somebody that voted for the motion.
Okay, so is there someone who would like to introduce the motion?
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, so motioned by Councilman Porter.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Dundon. And now we go back to the same question that we're waiting on. You, Councilman Kavanaugh.
So the motion to reconsider, as Councilmember Kavanaugh stated, needs to be made by somebody from the prevailing side, theoretically at the same meeting or the next regularly scheduled meeting. So there's some debate whether that would have been Monday or today, but either way, I mean, I think I'd have to check the charter on procedures for the Planning Commission, but if their term already started, you know, you have implications for removing somebody from a commission without pause. So you'd have to look into the bylaws of the Planning Commission. As this was just brought up five minutes ago, and you know, obviously I don't have that answer right now.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
Oh. You'll make the motion?
I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All right, motioned by.
How are you? I'm good.
It's cold in here. No, it's not. They need to clean this, like, table. Yeah, but my opinion, my opinion, my opinion.
All right, welcome back, we're back from, or welcome back to us, um, we're back from executive session, we met, um, to discuss a legal matter with our attorney, um, and now I'm looking for a motion to get us back on track.
Motion for a holdover. No, motion to holdover for reconsideration.
Okay, is there a second? Oh.
I hate to say, I hate to ask this, do we have to do another roll, we've done that before when we come out of, I'm just asking.
Thank, thank you, Councilman Strong. Um, the clerk will call a roll and then we'll go back to our motion here.
Okay.
Councilmember Porter.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Dundon.
Present.
Councilmember Strong.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Council President Medavetzky.
Present. All right, back to our motion.
I make a motion for a holdover for reconsideration.
There a second?
Second to that motion.
Okay, motioned by Councilman Porter, seconded by Councilman Dundon. And we'll take a roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dun-
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Nay.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky.
Aye.
One.
And passes, all right. Now, moving on to our CDEC appointment, so, uh, Councilmember Strong has been appointed as a representative to the minority party on the, um, representing the city council for CDEC. Does anyone else, is anyone else planning to appoint to CDEC this week?
Yes, I was making a motion for, uh, Rebecca Porter.
You have, but wait. Okay, so you, you, you don't have to make a motion, I think you're just, it's your, you pick who you.
I picked her for, uh, Rebecca Porter for appointment. Uh, I find that she is qualified, she's been part of, uh, the community, she's had experience on, uh, Urban League with the youth, as a director for the youth and, uh, adult services at Urban League. Also, she's on a youth, Upper Room County Youth Board, she's all, has been, uh, part of the, uh, board on the Noma Community Center as well. Uh, she's been throughout the community here for for some time, maybe about fourteen, fifteen years, uh, within, within the community and I think she'd be a good candidate, uh, for appointment for that position for for the first district, for the first district.
Great, thank you, Councilman Porter, anybody else? Yeah. Councilman Kavanaugh.
I'm appointing Rebecca Rathwell as, uh, the representative for, uh, my seat, thanks.
Thank you, um, all right, uh, for, uh, BLDC, um, Councilman Strong has been chosen as our representative of the minority party on, um, the LDC. And for Bureau, Councilman Strong has been chosen as our representative of the minority party, um, representing city council on Bureau. All right. Now we can move on to our public hearing, um, we have one public hearing tonight regarding RL twenty-four dash forty-two, a local law amending chapter four hundred of the city charter, vehicles and traffic, adding a prohibition of operation of off-road vehicles to the city of, in the city of Binghamton, residents are welcome to speak, you'll each have five minutes to discuss the prohibition of operation of off-road vehicles. Anyone here to discuss? Come on down. Okay, um, so if there are, is no one to discuss, um, I'll pass things over to our clerk. But so our clerk will read the ATV comments as part of public comment, so, um, if there's no more discussion, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motioned by Councilman Dundon, seconded by Councilman Middleton. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, now, uh, we can move on to public comment, please be respectful, each speaker will be given up to five minutes to address city council on city issues. Welcome.
That's a blessing.
Didn't have that back then. Okay, my name is Barry Kaufman. I reside at One Vincent Street in the city of Binghamton. Tonight, I'm here to discuss if the city can do something about the tax rate with the Homestead Act. What is the Homestead Act? The state allows local governments to create special property tax rates for residential and non-residential property. A lower rate for residential owners, the homestead tax, and a higher rate for the other property owners, non-homestead. Non-homestead properties apply to all taxable real property that does not qualify as a homestead. This includes everything from commercial, industrial property, to second homes, and rental units. With that said, there are commercial properties that are being converted to housing. They started out as commercial properties, they're non-homestead, they changed over to rentals. A lot of that happens like downtown, where the Press Building used to be, uh, the Fair Store next to the, uh, Boskoff's used to be. Uh, the Fair Store next to the, uh, Boskovs used to be. They're considered commercial properties and they can convert to housing. In contrast to that, I live in an R-one residential, one-family district. And what is happening in our district is that either these landlords or, uh, they're coming in, they're buying the one-family houses. They're converting them to rental, non-homestead properties, but yet they pay the homestead rate. I don't see how that is fair. Something, you can change it. It's not state mandated. You people can change that law. In my district, within a three-block radius, there is twelve one-family houses converted to rental housing, collecting rent, taking in an income. Now, these people don't have to rent to students. This doesn't have anything to do with student housing. They can rent to students, they can rent to working people, they can even rent to a family that wants to rent a house and pay for it. But the point is, how is it fair to the other commercial property owners? How is it fair to the taxpayers of the city that these people are getting away with this and they're collecting an income and making money? This has to be remedied. I don't see how you can, and the city is losing all kinds of revenue. If all these people paid what they were supposed to pay, our taxes would be even lower. So I'm asking you people, what can be done? I don't think it's fair. No comment? Nothing? You're just gonna sit there? You don't have any comment about this at all? The people are making money off of us and you don't care? And another thing, with all these people they're renting to, it lowers the integrity of the neighborhood. The mayor, you people complain, oh, there's no housing, there's no housing. These people looking for houses on the west side and all over Binghamton, they can't compete with these commercial people. A, a house is listed for a hundred thousand, they'll pay a hundred and twenty. You want more housing, but you're doing nothing. The law has to be changed. There's no comment, right? You can't talk about it? Nothing. You're just gonna let it stay the way it is? And that's the way it's gonna be. So the R-one neighborhoods is just gonna be full of commercial property owners.
You have one minute left.
I'm done. If you're not gonna do anything, you just sit there like mutes.
In public comment, we're listening. This is a listening session.
So you're gonna get back to me then?
We can.
I'd like to submit to my councilperson, if you could pass that over. Here's the twelve houses that are collecting rent and not paying what they're supposed to pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Welcome.
My name is Henry Rostowski. I lived in Binghamton all my life. Um, I'm just bringing up code again. Um, I got a little thing I had laminated from, uh, a while back, uh, two thousand and nine. If anybody remembers our illustrious, uh, graceful period with code, where a business owner that was seventy years old named Sue Monaco was jailed because of siding on the Union Hotel. So, um, that, I just, bringing that up because it just seems like it's too selective. Uh, you know, they'll go after certain people that don't have a lot of money or whatever, and that was my complaint, my, my personal problem. Um, two years ago, I had property taken by code and, um, I had asked to go to court and they refused. And so I had sent in a complaint to the State Attorney General's Office and for, um, not being given due process. And it turns out with my luck, of course, that never made it to the Attorney General's Office. So I'm gonna be resubmitting that, but it's probably too late for them to even do anything about it. Um, but I just, uh, think this is a, a problem where they'll kind of be selective and, uh, just run people through the wringer and it's, it's not equitable, it's not fair. Uh, I think it would, I would like to be working with the city instead of having the city just snap their fingers and expect me to jump and go through this hoop and go through that hoop. And sometimes you can't get the money right away and it might take a while. And that's kind of all I'm asking is for them to work with me. They forced me into the bankruptcy a number of years ago, so I was walking away from the building. But I did do more work on it and as soon as I got more work on it, uh, and the building looks great, but the majority of it, the second floor up looks great. And then I get kicked in the teeth with, uh, this thing where they steal my property, the building materials. So that's basically all I wanted to just be continuing thorn in this side here and I'll probably be coming to code meetings from, I mean, uh, city council meetings from now on, just to be here and remind everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. I am Misty M. Kirby, PhD. I am a South Side resident. I also work and volunteer in the city of Binghamton and am definitely a newcomer, um, compared to Mr. Kaufman. I've only lived here a couple of years. Um, the last, excuse me, the last two times that I spoke at the Binghamton School Board of Education, I've been speaking to them about dignity. And so I'm here to speak to you all about dignity tonight as well. At the school board, I've been pushing the board to reconsider the policy of social promotion, which is when students move along from grades, between grades one and eight, whether or not they pass their classes to stay with their peer cohort. I've asked them to reconsider this because there is no rigorous research that supports it. And that's because the policy is rooted in systemic racism. Many of the issues that this council is dealing with tonight are in fact issues with the same root, systemic racism. Based on the redlining from the nineteen thirty-five maps of the triple cities, which you can find on the University of Richmond's website, mapping inequality. A lot of the problems that we are dealing with today have been in place longer than most of us have been around. So I'm very pleased tonight to see on the agenda some dignity since here in Binghamton. The agenda focuses on exactly what many of us has, have been working on and toward, investment in our community, in infrastructure, investing in people who literally keep the vehicles running. Um, and most especially for investing in people and buildings and neighborhoods that need it most, like north of Maine, Noma, which was a district redlined as a result of the National Housing Act of nineteen thirty-four. Moreover, I was very happy to see tonight's introductory ordinance rescinding the Old Boy Network money pit known as the Water Street Development Corporation. May it rest in pieces. May I ask you all tonight, though, to not lose focus of your time and energy on the people who are left here, not necessarily the people in their ATVs on a baseball field? Um, think about the people who are put in undignified positions because of the systems of oppression that we have in place. They have not asked to be like that. People want to be treated with dignity. And so if I ask for you all tonight as leaders, we need to ask ourselves, especially when we're introducing policy, is how does this affect least advantaged among us? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak as part of public comment? Welcome.
Now is it on? There we go. Okay. Hi, I'm Amari Pavadi. I live in District Three. I'm a student at Binghamton University. I live and work here year-round and I'm here again to talk about the ceasefire resolution. Um, the RL is in, is going to be, uh, submitted imminently as well as a, uh, longer document that we're working on covering more of the context as well as Binghamton's role, city council president. Pretty much, uh, a good swath of arguments about this. Um, last week I, or not last week, last session, two weeks ago, I spoke and everything I said then still stands. I'll just, most important points. There is a catastrophe. So many people are at risk of dying. So much could be done by the US, so little is being done. This is an element of many forms of protest, from protests in the streets to letters to, uh, uncommitted votes and it's so, again, to hear for a representative, for a federal representative, receiving a letter from a city council saying that this community is speaking up about it, so much more than just singular members. So it is incredibly important that this is considered with the continuing weight that it has. Um, I just want to thank everyone for listening, uh, continually. I want to encourage everyone to continue listening to their constituents as the is raised and spread further. Um, and I just want to encourage that the resolution, once submitted, takes the fastest possible course through legislation. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak at public comment? Welcome.
Been here before. Couple of weeks ago, about the same thing, you know, the ceasefire resolution in Gaza, uh, the continuing.
We didn't, we didn't catch your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim Clune, CLU, I live on Pine Street, Binghamton. I believe that's in the sixth district. Um, uh, lost my train of thought. That, uh, we, we are presenting a resolution, a ceasefire resolution, calling for a full ceasefire in Gaza, a, uh, exchange of hostages and re, and re-establishing financing of, of relief agencies, the UN Relief Agency. Uh, we still want to see that happen. We'd like to use the, uh, statement to be even stronger, but we, we understand that, that, uh, what, what we really, we need to focus right at the moment on stuff that the United States can force to happen immediately. Uh, I want to, uh, add one thing that, uh, the people who, uh, who sat over here a couple of weeks ago, uh, who were trying to counter what we were saying, I found them to be, uh, very sincere and struggling with the issues. I have no quarrel with them. I do disagree with many of their conclusions, but I fully respected, uh, what they were saying and their struggle to underst, to understand the challenge that we are making, uh, to American policy. I, I would want to say, and, and this is my last point, uh, six, uh, eighty-four city councils in the United States have passed this, this or a similar resolution in the past few months. Uh, so if you see fit to pass this motion, you won't be alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's here to speak at public comment? Okay. Um, so I'll ask the clerk to read the submitted comment.
Starting with a letter from Room County District Attorney, Paul Batisti. Dear Mayor Cram, I recently read a story on your proposed legislation to crack down on the operation of illegal off-road bikes within the city of Binghamton. I applaud you. I have witnessed firsthand the negative impact illegal operation has on the quality of life and safety of our great city and your proposed enhanced consequences will be a strong deterrent to riders. All too often, these bikes are used to flee police and their reckless operation jeopardizes all others on the roadway. As just, as district attorney, the safety and security of our community is my top priority and I thank you for your innovation addressing this issue. You have my full support. From the First Ward Neighborhood Watch. The First Ward Neighborhood Watch Group meets to discuss issues that affect the quality of life of our members. One of the issues that has been brought up in many of our meetings has been the issue of unlicensed off-road vehicles that speed down our streets as soon as the weather warms. Several of the neighbors on such streets as Elm, Oak, Everett, and St. Cyril Ab have consistently voiced concerns about young people who seem to be joyriding on these loud vehicles, often with no particular destination and at breakneck speeds. It has become an issue that has adversely affected the quality as well as the safety of our streets. The recent proposal to crack down on these kinds of vehicles on our streets is indeed a welcome response to a worrisome and potentially dangerous issue. And on behalf of the members of the First Ward Neighborhood Watch, we are sending this letter to confirm, confirm our support of such a proposal. We look forward to its approval and implementation. Summer will be so much quieter and safer than years past if these illegal vehicles can be kept off our streets. Thank you for your attention to this issue. And there is an attached list, which will be included in the minutes of supporters. From Kurt Eschbach. I am writing in support of recently announced legislation to create stronger penalties for the illegal operation of off-road motorized vehicles on city streets. As a business operator and property owner on Shenango Street, I regularly witness individuals driving these vehicles through the Shenango Street Tunnel adjacent to my property. Most generally, the operators are driving at a high rate of speed, often on the sidewalk or wrong side of the road, particular if they are racing each other. The low height and speed of these vehicles, along with shadow darkness issues associated with the tunnel, has created a very dangerous situation where people entering or exiting from my parking lots might be involved in an accident resulting in potential injury to one or both parties as well as property damage, with associated costs likely being borne by the driver of the legally operated vehicle, since the off-road vehicles are not insured, inspected, or licensed. People walking dogs are also impacted by these vehicles as the dogs are often scared by the loud noise and lunge to chase the offender. It is evident that existing laws do not provide sufficient deterrent to the operators of such vehicles and that as a matter of public safety and economic justice to parties adversely impacted by damage created by the unlawful use of these vehicles, that the city act accordingly and escalate the penalties associated with such unlawful operation of off-road vehicles on city streets. I stand in full support of this legislation and encourage city council to act accordingly. From Peter First of Binghamton, New York. My name is Peter First and I'm a First Ward resident and a member of the First Ward Neighborhood Watch. I am very much in agreement with the mayor's proposed legislation dealing with ATVs and the likes being driven on city streets. I own property on Winding Way and I have seen adults with small children riding around on that street with no helmets, making a lot of noise, just joyriding, creating a dangerous situation for other drivers on that street. Also, I live on Lorraine Ave and I have seen small dirt bikes being driven by adolescents and young adults racing through the Wilson School parking lot onto Lorraine, up to Prospect, with dangerous consequences for the regular cars and pedestrians using those streets. From John Krostofsky. I would like to express my support for the legislation regarding off-road vehicles driven on city streets that is being introduced by Mayor Cram and that is to be taken up by city council at its March thirteenth meeting. I also support the penalties and vehicle confiscation proposed in this legislation for violations of it. This problem has been a long-standing one, literally decades in my First Ward neighborhood, Baxter Street, and I think pretty much every homeowner or long-term resident with whom I have spoken feels mostly the same regarding it as I do. I have four main objections to these vehicles. One, they are almost always very noisy to extremely noisy, creating a good deal of sound pollution, particularly bothersome after dark. Oftentimes, the individuals piloting these vehicles don't appear to be going anywhere in particular, such as to a store, that seem to be simply joyriding for the apparent purpose of making as big a nuisance out of themselves as possible. This compounds the noise and other problems which I mentioned below, as the vehicles often seem to be recirculating through the same streets and blocks over and over again in a relatively brief span of time. Two, many of them seem not to have any air pollution control mechanisms on them and can leave a foul, sickening smell in the area, even long after they have passed through. Three, most of the persons driving these vehicles pay little, if any, attention to the rules of the road, either purposely or might, more likely because they are completely unaware of what the rules are or that they even exist. It is common to see such persons riding on the wrong side of the road, even at nighttime, with no lighting or reflective material on the vehicle, no safety equipment on their person, such as helmets, and not infrequently with small children aboard who are also not wearing any type of safety clothing. The drivers themselves seem to be barely past childhood, although many are older and should know better. All of this creates a very dangerous environment, both for the off-road vehicle drivers themselves and their passengers, as well as for conventional motorists, whether they are passing through or living on the streets that are afflicted with this activity. I and many others on my street are seniors who back our own vehicles out into the road. It is already difficult enough while doing so to try to avoid other oncoming vehicles, as well as the pedestrians and children, children who seem prone to walk and play in traffic around here. Adding illegal off-road vehicles which are being driven recklessly just adds further danger to this mix. Four, the unchecked operation of these vehicles sets a bad example for children who might be inclined to engage in this or any other unsafe activities and also signals to less mature adults that in anything, those attitude prevails, which might make them. and also signals to less mature adults that in anything, those attitude prevails, which might make them inclined to engage in other undesirable activities, under the assumption that those too will be tolerated, leading to further neighborhood disintegration. Thank you for listening to my concerns on this subject and giving them your thoughtful consideration. From George Cummings of 33 Rush Ave in Binghamton. To whom it may concern, I am in favor of any and all legislation that restricts the use of ATVs, dirt bikes, and any other off-road vehicles operated on city streets that do not have legal licenses. I have witnessed in my neighborhood the use of such vehicles, which are noisy and potential hazards, as I live in proximity of MacArthur Elementary School, where there are young people walking to and from school daily. From Bethany Baez of Binghamton. Dear city council members, I hope this message finds you well. I'm writing to bring attention to your attention, I'm writing to bring to your attention a pressing concern that has been adversely affecting the quality of life in our neighborhood. The issue pertains to the persistent disturbances caused by our neighbors at 51 Mary Street, who habitually play excessively loud music and engage in the illegal use of ATVs on our residential streets. Over the past few years, the noise levels emanating from our neighbor's property have escalated to a point where it disrupts the peace and tranquility of our community. Despite countless attempts to address the matter with the assistance of law enforcement, the situation persists unabated. Their disregard for the peace and privacy of their fellow residents is not only discourteous, but also violates the established noise ordinances of our city. Furthermore, the illegal usage of ATVs on our streets poses a significant safety hazard to pedestrians, cyclists, and other motorists. The reckless behavior exhibited by these individuals not only compromises the well-being of our community members, but also undermines the integrity of our local traffic regulations. As concerned residents, we implore the Binghamton City Council to take decisive action to remedy the situation promptly. We respectfully request your intervention to enforce existing noise ordinances and implement measures to deter the unlawful use of ATVs in our neighborhood. By doing so, we can restore peace and harmony to our community and ensure the safety of all residents. We appreciate your attention to this matter and look forward to a swift and effective resolution. Should you require any other information or assistance, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you for your time and consideration. From Mark and Michelle Harder. We are writing regarding the ATV problem on 51 Mary Street, Binghamton. They run them constantly at Mary going the wrong way almost every day. Someone is going to get hurt or killed. The police can never catch them riding, no matter how many times we call. This needs to stop. The last time they were stopped, they weren't confiscated. Maybe hit them in their pockets and they will stop. Thank you. From Dr. Tanya Thompson, the superintendent of schools. Dear Mayor of Cram, dear Mayor Cram, I'm writing in support of your proposed legislation relating to the illegal operation of off-road vehicles within the city of Binghamton. The use of these vehicles in our neighborhoods has increased dramatically in recent years and has directly impacted the students and families of the Binghamton School District. Despite off-road vehicles already being illegal on city streets and public land, many drivers continue to operate them. Given that all 10 of B C S D's school buildings are located within residential areas, these incidents often occur near or on school grounds. In fact, just this week, Binghamton Police responded to a call of off-road vehicles being driven on the baseball field behind Benjamin Franklin Elementary. A separate off-road vehicle incident happened at Calvin Coolidge Elementary earlier this year. With 60% of students who walk to and from school, these vehicles put them in danger during their commutes. Additionally, almost all our schools have parks or open areas on or near their properties, and these types of fields are common areas for the illegal use of off-road vehicles. This poses a direct risk for children who not only use these areas during the school day, but families who gather at them in the evenings, on weekends, and during summers. The dangers of off-road vehicles aside, there are also quality of life concerns caused by their use. These incidents often cause significant damage to our grounds, resulting in costs that will be incurred by taxpayers. Noise and exhaust from the vehicles can also be a nuisance to neighbors. I fully support this legislation, and I appreciate your attention to the support issue. From Heidi Weeks. My name is Heidi Weeks Crocker, and I am the owner of Mabel Dior Fashion Boutique at 118 Washington Street. I have been renting a storefront here for the past six years. In these past years, I have seen the progress of the street and also the difficulties of the street. Mainly, I have seen how difficult it has been for the Salvation Army to service people because of such growth. There is lack of space for unloading of food and supplies for their garbage and for people they are serving to have a place of respite where they can eat. It also makes it difficult for surrounding businesses to work around them. We are all collectively doing what we hope will make Binghamton a better and thriving place, at the same time taking care of those in need. So I fully support their decision to relocate to a better space for their services. In my observations in six years, I truly believe that if they had a better kitchen, they could provide more nutritional meals and service area. I applaud Binghamton's effort to feed people who are in need. That should never stop. But we can also make it better by providing more space for them that would service a wider area of people. I thank you for your time and consideration. From Erin Slavik and Amy Russell of Goldenrod Studios. Dear Binghamton City Council Members, we are writing to express our strong support for the proposal to grant $100,000 to the Salvation Army of Binghamton. This significant financial boost would not only empower the Salvation Army to serve our community members more effectively, but would also bring substantial benefits to the businesses on Washington Street, which play a pivotal role in our city's vibrancy and economic health. The Salvation Army has been a beacon of hope for countless individuals and families in need, offering assistance with food, shelter, counseling, and rehabilitation programs. The organization's mission to serve without discrimination aligns perfectly with the values we cherish in Binghamton. With the proposed funding, the Salvation Army will have the capacity to enhance their services, accommodate more clients, and address the rising demand for compassion and support, particularly in these challenging times. Moreover, the business community on Washington Street would profit from this investment in the Salvation Army. By providing structured, comprehensive assistance to those struggling with homelessness and substance abuse, we can expect a reduction in day-to-day issues such as panhandling, loitering, and petty crime. Such improvements would create a more welcoming and secure environment for customers and businesses alike, fostering economic growth and community well-being. The proposed $100,000 in funding represents more than just a monetary contribution. It is an investment in the fabric of our city. It will yield returns in the form of a stronger community where every person has the opportunity to contribute positively to our collective future. The Salvation Army's dedication to doing the most good is a philosophy that resonates with our shared vision for Binghamton, and I implore you to consider the far-reaching impacts of this endowment. By supporting this admirable institution, the city council will be demonstrating a commitment to uplifting all members of our community and creating a city where compassion is a cornerstone of progress. Thank you for your time and your commitment to making Binghamton a place we can all be proud to call home. We trust you will give this proposal the attention and consideration it deserves. From Sherry Eaton. My name is Sherry Eaton, and I am a business owner of the Garland Gallery and live-in landlord at 116 Washington Street, Binghamton. I have lived and worked on Washington Street for more than 30 years. I wholeheartedly support the Salvation Army's plan to relocate to a facility that will allow expansion of services to the community. As they have said in their announcement, their services to those who are food insecure are in need of a larger and more appropriate space. With the city's support, this move will benefit the people most in need of the Salvation Army services. It will also benefit the business owners on the street, as well as the customers they seek to serve. From David Whalen. My name is David Whalen, and I am the owner of Binghamton Hots and 128 Washington Street in downtown Binghamton. I'm writing to express my support for approval of funding to help facilitate Salvation Army's move to their new location on Walnut Street. The Salvation Army provides critical resources for some of our community's most underserved residents, most notably their daily meal programs. However, over the years, specifically post-COVID, I've watched them outgrow their current facility. They've struggled to maintain the services they provide in a way that best serves their clients, as well as the other residents of the neighborhood. With the city's support, their new location on Walnut Street will provide upgraded facilities and infrastructure, allowing them to expand services and better serve their clients in a more convenient location. This move will also be a net positive for the Washington Street corridor and the downtown district as a whole, making it more conducive to attracting visitors, residents, and customers for businesses alike, with an improved atmosphere and better public safety. From Alex Bardashoff. My name is Alex Bardashoff, and I am co-owner of Strange Brew Cafe. I am here to show my support of Salvation Army's decision to upgrade their operations and relocation through the monetary assistance from the mayor's office and city council. We have been neighbors for eight years and have gotten to know most of the staff and many of the patrons who rely on their services. Here is a brief perspective on why we support this project. One, funding assistance for the new facility will help meet their operational needs. To the benefit of their recipients, the Salvation Army has outgrown their current location, and funding the build-out of their new location would allow for them to continue providing and expanding their services to the community. Two, public safety for everyone. There is typically a long line outside of their current facility, which often extends toward the parking garage and the alleyway that leads into the back CVS parking lot. With that area regularly having a high volume of cars going in and out, it is not ideal to have a high volume of people in that crowded corridor. Development of the new facility may better help accommodate their patrons in this regard and aid in mitigating the daily amount of traffic we experience on the street. Three, a better location benefits our community as a whole. A better-suited location will preserve the sustainability of the many businesses that collect and pay the taxes that make it possible to provide such services to our community, specifically to those in need. With better facilitation, Washington Street and downtown collectively can continue to be a growing destination welcoming to all. We believe that the funding of the Salvation Army's new location operations will solve a multitude of such obstacles, and we hope that the city council sees the advantages it will bring to the entire community.
Thank you. All right. We can now move on to our first reading legislation. Thank you to everyone who spoke tonight, and thank you to everyone who submitted thoughts to our clerk to read to us tonight. So first, we have introductory ordinance, oh, 24-10, considered in employees. Councilmember Porter.
Yes, this is basically to increase the salary for the mechanic position. This is for the mechanic position, especially dealing with BPD. They need some form of a way to competitive wages for mechanics to even want to come, or at least to try to keep the mechanic that they already was trying to have, still stay here. So by having this, we'll pay to continue to have people work on our vehicles that is needed within our community, especially for the city.
Or emotion in there?
I'd like to make them for this to go.
Second.
The motion was made for introductory ordinance, oh, 24-10, an ordinance to amend 2024 police budget to increase the annual salary of the mechanic position by Councilmember Porter and seconded by Councilman Hotchkiss. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk can call a roll.
Councilmember Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky?
Aye.
That's seven zero.
Motion carries. I mean, the ordinance, yeah, the ordinance carries. Next, we have introductory ordinance, oh, 24-11, considered in finance. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I'd like to motion to pass introductory ordinance number 02, 024-11, an ordinance amending the 2023 Binghamton Johnson City Sewer Board budget to increase the Village of Johnson City local system costs.
I'll make a second to the motion.
Okay. Motioned by Councilman Kavanaugh, seconded by Councilman Dundon. Can the clerk call a roll? Oh, discussion. Sorry, discussion. For Kavanaugh.
So in this, as this was covered in work session, this is decreasing the city of Binghamton's share of the local system costs and increasing Johnson City's share for last year. This is just rolling kind of financing, catching up with the actual measurement and usage. So fairly routine.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Now the clerk can call a roll.
Councilmember Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Right. All right. Next, we have introductory ordinance, oh, 24-12, considered in finance. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Like I make a motion to pass, entering the ordinance, oh, 24-12, an ordinance to amend the 2023 water and sewer fund budget for retroactive pay for five employees due to grievance decision that was made on 12/15/23.
I'll second the motion.
Motioned by Councilman Kavanaugh, seconded by Councilman Dundon. Discussion. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
All right. Just to give the quick overview here, there was a change in the designation for some employees in the water department. The state was fairly slow in acting to actually enact those, the changes to those positions. So they weren't, they weren't correctly paid for the work they were doing. Grievance was filed, and the decision was made by the previous corporation council to make that pay adjustment, I think justifiably. These guys were doing that work, and they should be paid for it. And this is us making right on that treatment.
Any further discussion? All right. The clerk can call the roll. Thank you.
Councilmember Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky?
Aye.
That's seven zero.
The ordinance passes. Next, we have introductory ordinance, oh, 24-13, considered in planning. Councilmember Hotchkiss.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the introductory ordinance, oh, 24-13. This is an ordinance rescinding permanent resolutions, an ordinance related to the Water Street Development Corporation.
I'll second.
Motioned by Councilman Hotchkiss, seconded by Councilman Kavanaugh. Discussion.
There's just a quick explanation. These were resolutions and ordinances that were associated with the development of the Water Street Development Project. That project isn't moving forward as it was originally planned, and this is just cleaning up some resolutions that shouldn't be left out in a limbo state. So just cleaning that all up.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Porter.
I just want to get a better understanding. So this is basically voting on on to continue to not keep the resolution in place or keep any of the Water Street developing in place.
Right, so.
Councilman Hotchkiss.
Yeah, so previously, there was a moving forward, they were trying to do, not moving forward. Originally, this was a public-private partnership where there was a housing developer that was going to build on top of the parking garage. So the land was kind of a split relationship between public ownership and private ownership. And some of these resolutions were what legally allowed that to happen and outlined it. So it is, we're taking these back because that's no longer happening. The city is going to have ownership of the parking ramp, and it's going to be more straightforward.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Okay, the clerk can call the roll.
Councilmember Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky?
Aye.
Seven zero.
The ordinance carries. All right, we have introductory ordinance, oh, twenty, oh, 20-14, considered in planning. Councilmember Hotchkiss.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt introductory ordinance, oh, 24-14. This is an ordinance authorizing the local adoption of the Main Street Historic District.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motioned by Councilmember Hotchkiss, seconded by Councilmember Kavanaugh. Discussion. Councilmember Hotchkiss.
So this creates a designation of a historic district along the Main Street corridor coming by Front Street. And I think there's a lot of really great historic buildings there, and this helps to preserve them. So that's what that is.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Kavanaugh, please.
Yeah, this is kind of tying a bow on a process that's been ongoing for a while. There's, many of these sites are already on the National Register of Historic Places, and the district as a whole is on the state register already. So we're just kind of bringing ourselves into alignment with the district we've already lobbied the state to create, and they did. So this is providing that last layer of local recognition and protection. This study of planning has been working on for a while, and it's nice to, you know, see it finally come to its final phase here.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, the clerk can call the roll.
Councilmember Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky?
Aye.
That's seven zero.
The ordinance passes. All right. So next we have introductory ordinance oh twenty-four dash thirteen, considered in planning, council member Hotchkiss. Oops, sorry. We're on fifteen, all right. We have introductory ordinance zero oh twenty-four dash fifteen, considered in finance, council member Kavanaugh.
I'd like to make a motion to pass oh two four dash one five, an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-three general fund to adjust for Assistant Corporation Council under the code ARPA for unused salary at the year's end.
Second.
Motioned by councilmember Kavanaugh, seconded by councilman Hotchkiss, discussion. Councilman Kavanaugh.
So this was, funds were allocated for a position in the corporation council office that was not not fully used up because of when the hiring took place. So we're taking it out of that and throwing it back into the the main ARPA ARPA bucket, which will be reallocated.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, the clerk may call the roll.
Council member Porter.
Aye.
Council member Middleton.
Aye.
Council member Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Council member Dundon.
Aye.
Council member Strong.
Aye.
Council member Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council president Medavetzky.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, the ordinance passes. All right, and now we move on to introductory ordinance oh twenty-four dash sixteen, considered in finance, council member Kavanaugh.
I'd like to motion to pass introductory ordinance oh twenty-four dash sixteen, an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-three police fund budget to decrease accounts for unused ARPA incentive funds.
Is there a second?
Again.
Second. Motioned by councilman Kavanaugh, seconded by councilman Hotchkiss, discussion. Councilman Kavanaugh.
All right, so very similar to the last ordinance, this, in this case, these were funds that were set aside out of ARPA to provide retention incentives for the police department, they weren't fully utilized. So again, we're taking them out of that line and putting them back in one of the main ARPA buckets for reallocation.
Any further discussion? Councilman Hotchkiss.
Yeah, so there was, we had a committee meeting about this and I think the original allocation was four hundred thousand dollars, we spent three hundred thousand dollars and there wasn't really an indication, at least from the people that were at that meeting, that this was a successful program or not. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, the clerk can take the roll.
Council member Porter.
Aye.
Council member Middleton.
Aye.
Council member Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Council member Dundon.
Aye.
Council member Strong.
Aye.
Council member Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council president Medavetzky.
Aye.
That's seven zero.
The ordinance passes. Okay, so next we have introductory ordinance oh twenty-four dash seventeen, considered in public works, council member Dundon.
I'd like to make a motion on ordinance zero twenty-four seventeen, it's an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-four adopted fee schedule to allow additional fees for DPW.
Second.
Okay, motioned by councilman Dundon, seconded by councilman Hotchkiss, discussion.
I have dollars for tires, twenty-five dollars for television sets, fifty for free on units, refrigerator AC unit and thirty dollars for plywood OSB. In the twenty twenty-four budget, these things are not labeled in the fee schedule and this legislation would add these specific items to the fee schedule.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Porter.
Trying to understand, so these are as a way for or pick up basically, is this what?
So from my understanding, it's just to separate the budgets and have specific items in the schedule instead of it lumped under one just generally. So it gives more specifics.
Why? Why be more specific? I'm just want to.
You know, I wasn't at the work session, so I only have what's in front of me.
Councilman Kavanaugh.
I, so some of it is to not have just a, so these are, these are fines essentially for stuff you put on the curb that you're not supposed to. So you might have just gotten a tag and maybe a blanket fifty dollar fine. These are more specific and some of them reflect costs associated with actually disposing these particular items. I had a, I think we had a somewhat long exchange with with Josh Palludi about the, like the whole process for disposing of of these free on units that have to be, the gas has to be recaptured, the stuff, there's recycling costs involved with that. And the way they have, they pile them up and take them in groups and stuff, so some of this is addressing specific costs for specific types of kind of nuisance waste, if you will. That's particularly problematic for the DPW to work, to take care of. And I think the plywood's on there just because it's big and annoying to deal with.
So so basically for each item that is whoever released that out on there for garbage to pick up, they all have to pay for a different item, a fee for a different item for each, each of those items, correct?
Right, these are kind of the penalty, so there's ways to get rid of these with lesser or no cost, like there's specific collection days for electronics and they will pick up an individual fridge or an individual air conditioning unit if you call to do it, and they will send the truck out. So it's, this is for you know, improperly disposed of things.
Okay, so to improperly or properly dispose them, because you, when you say.
Properly, these are the, these are the fines for putting them on the curb.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Just leave the stuff on there, right, yeah. Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, clerk can call the roll.
Council member Porter.
Aye.
Council member Middleton.
Aye.
Council member Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Council member Dundon.
Aye.
Council member Strong.
Aye.
Council member Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council president Medavetzky.
Aye.
That's seven zero.
The carries. We have introductory ordinance four dash eighteen, considered in planning, council member Hotchkiss.
Madam President, I'd like to call a point of order real quick, I need to recuse myself from anything that has to do with this ordinance for a conflict of interest that my last employer through the union was Gora Construction.
Thank you, councilman Dundon.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt introductory ordinance twenty-four dash eighteen. This is an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-four general budget for the demolition of a fire damaged property at seventeen William Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion, oh.
I'm sorry.
Is there?
I think, I don't think we can double check this and obviously we would accept it, but I think we need to accept his recusal. Because you can't automatically not vote on your own, I mean, it makes sense and I would vote to accept that, but I, I'm not sure if I'm right or not, but. If I'm wrong, then that's fine, I think that we had to do that, though.
We can take a vote on it.
Just to, just to make it clear that we all heard and that we all agree.
Okay, so I guess we'll take a vote on his not, councilman Dundon's recusal for this vote.
Reporter.
Accept.
Council member Middleton.
I accept.
Council member Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Council member Dundon.
Aye.
Force of habit, excuse me, council member Strong.
Aye.
Council member Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council president Medavetzky.
Aye.
That is six zero.
Okay. So the recusal on this ordinance for councilmember Dundon passes. All right, okay, so back to councilman Hotchkiss, where he was making a motion.
Sure. Like to make motion to adopt introductory ordinance oh twenty-four dash eighteen. This is an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-four general fund budget for the demolition of a fire damaged property at eighteen William Street, seventeen William Street, excuse me. Second.
Okay, motioned by councilmember Hotchkiss, seconded by councilmember Strong, discussion. All right, the clerk can call the roll.
Council member Porter.
Aye.
Council member Middleton.
Aye.
Council member Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Council member Strong.
Aye.
Council member Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council president Medavetzky.
Aye.
Six zero.
Ordinance passes. Right. Next, we have so we have introductory ordinance oh twenty-four dash nineteen, considered in municipal and public affairs, council member Middleton.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to the ordinance to amend the two thousand and twenty-four general fund budget to allocate ARPA funds to support building upgrades at eighty-six Walnut Street for the Salvation Army. Just before.
Second?
Oh, sorry.
Second, is there a second? Second, okay, motion by councilman Middleton, seconded by councilman Hotchkiss, discussion. Council member Middleton.
Oh, I was gonna say this last past Monday, myself and some council members had a committee meeting with the Salvation Army. We also went to check out their old site on Washington Avenue and to check out the new site today, me and Hadassah went on Walnut Street. They came to us with the plans on what they plan to do with the new site and, you know, it, it looks amazing and I'm actually happy to vote on supporting this project.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think this was.
For Hotchkiss.
We had quite a bit of discussion and research and background into this. I think we were actually really thorough, which I'm happy about. That said, I think ultimately there's going to be a lot of, a lot of benefits to moving this, I think it's going to be a boon for the Walnut Street and Noma area. I think a lot of those resources will be well received there, I think, obviously, as we heard, a lot of the businesses are they are appreciative or supportive of the move by the Salvation Army because they have a lot of logistical difficulties on Washington Street. However, there is, there's like this one, there's still a group of people that there's, it's not a perfect thing because they're going to be having to travel further to get their, whether it's their breakfast or if they access the pantry. This legislation doesn't really stop the move or the development and it just supports the the redevelopment of the Walnut Street thing, but it's like, it's kind of weighed on me kind of heavily because we heard I think what Misty was talking about during the public comments section about like the history of like redlining and all the, all the damage that has occurred from that and then now there's like more progressive legislation that's trying to like undo redlining with like inclusion, inclusionary zoning. So it's I've had a little bit of conflict in how I'm have thought about this, but ultimately I'll be supporting it because we're not, we're not stopping them from moving, they're going to move no matter what. And there'll be a number of people that are in District Four that are just going to have a harder time accessing those resources. But I'd like to accelerate the, the development in the way that we can.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, councilman Porter.
Yes. I watched the meeting, a little bit of the meeting, but it still is my concern that you're leaving it for people who have to have to travel, especially when we have inadequate transportation within the city. So I just find here or in place of something else, just in place of that as well, as having that too. Because two can be, two can be true at the same time, so I just feel that there's something that should be something here, at least downtown. Obviously, they don't want to see poor people in their, in what they consider poor people in the area of their business. But I just feel, you know, we're just moving one place and not having something adequate for, for here and just saying, go over here so you could be unseen. So I, that's how I feel and I just think something has to be still done for, at least for the fourth district to have something here as well.
I, I just want to chime in.
Council member Middleton.
I just want to chime in, I do agree with that. I, I think if you watch further in the meeting, those were one of our, that was one of our concerns too. And they did say that they would, and correct me if I'm wrong, they did say that they would try to help people who were having trouble, like if they, if they had trouble, you know, accessing the same food or that same outreach until they can get there. So they're not just basically saying that they're going to cut people off if you can't get there, they're, they're going to try to find other ways to reach out to them, whether that be delivery or different, you know, aspects of that, because they still want to make sure that they are still servicing the same people. So they, they, that was one of the questions that we did ask because we don't want anybody to be left out, but they did, they did, they did tell us that they would try to service them, whether it would be delivery or, you know, other ways to get to them. So that, that's one of the things that we did ask.
Council member Kavanaugh.
In addition to that, I mean, in their view, dealing with, you know, they made a point about that they've are there on a daily basis, interacting with these folks on a daily basis and have gotten to know a lot of them and, and feelings seem to be from the Salvation Army folks that they're actually, they viewed it as they're being, they're moving closer to the majority of the people they're serving. They see more need over in the, in, in, in the new location. And it's, it's, there's going to be, it's, it's a balancing of, it's a balancing of, you can't make this one location work for everybody, they, but I think that Salvation Army folks did step up and, and are trying to still serve the downtown population that they were serving, mitigating some of the effects of, of the move. And then helping a very needy area of, of the West Side over in the Third District. And I'd also just like to mention that there is, I have gotten some concerns from some Third District residents and property owners about the some of the concerns about having a kind of a higher volume tenant or owner of eighty-six Walnut. But Salvation Army also is discussing ways that they are, you know, the larger dining area that they're going to have inside the building, having a contract with Taylor Garbage for, for disposal of garbage and things that should help them be good neighbors to everyone on the West Side. So I, I I sympathize with the fact that this is a moving of a, of a, something that's been an important resource for some people. But I think it is overall unbalanced, you know, a net gain for services in Binghamton and I think we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council member Strong.
I just wanted to say I look forward to supporting this and I thank, thank all of you for the thoroughness and the, the questions and concerns on, on both sides that are certainly you know, well thought through and sincere, but I think this is unbalanced, excellent use of this money for this purpose, thank you.
Thank you, councilman Strong. Any further discussion? So the, the one point that wasn't brought up from, from the work session that are the MPA committee meeting was the, was the money, we, we did talk to Salvation Army to understand since they're going to be selling the building that they own downtown, that they, they are investing that money locally, that money is not leaving the area, because that was one of, one of our concerns was that, you know, we were giving a hundred, you know, if this passes, that it would be giving them a hundred thousand. a hundred, you know, if, if this passes, um, that it would be giving them a hundred thousand um, dollars and if they then sold a building for a million dollars and send that money to Syracuse or something like that, that, that would be uh, not a good use of our, our local money, but they are intending to use their, the, the money locally from the sale of the building. And this is, this hundred thousand is only a small, small fraction of the cost of renovating this building that we, that Council uh, Member Middleton and I toured today. So, all right, uh, with that, I will pass it to the clerk to take a roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Nay.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky. It's six one.
The ordinance uh, passes. All right. All right, we, next we have introductory resolution R twenty four dash fourteen, considered in public works, Councilmember Dundon.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion on resolution R twenty four fourteen, it's a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a grant from the Broom County Small Community Fund for nine thousand dollars for handicapped chairlifts at Webster Street in Sherlinsey Park.
Second.
Second, okay, motioned by Councilmember Dundon, seconded by Councilman Hotchkiss, discussion.
So this grant will allow us to uh, replace two of the aging chairlifts that are already at the pools and with getting a grant, it pretty much covers.
All right, any further discussion? All right, and with that, um, the clerk may call the roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky.
Aye.
It's seven zero.
The resolution passes. Next, we have introductory resolution R twenty four dash fifteen, considered in finance. Uh, count. Um, and considered in planning, Council Hotchkiss.
Thank you, uh, this is a motion, uh, I'd like to make motion to adopt introductory ordinance R twenty four dash fifteen. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease extension with the United Way of Broom County for the Lee Barda Community Center.
I'll make it.
Motioned by Councilmember Hotchkiss, seconded by Councilmember Dundon, discussion.
Sure, um, just a little bit of explanation, the uh, Healthy Lifestyles Coalition, which is part of the United Way, leases the Lee Barda Community Center from the city and they just need to update their um, their lease, not update, renew their lease. And I, I really support the work that they're doing over there, so I don't, I support this.
Any further discussion? Okay, the clerk may call the roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky.
Aye.
Seven zero.
The resolution passes. Uh, next we have introductory resolution R twenty four dash sixteen, considered in planning, Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Like to make motion to adopt introductory resolution R twenty four dash sixteen, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a congressional award for one million dollars for the City of Binghamton Youth Recreation Center.
I second.
Great, motioned by Councilmember Hotchkiss, seconded by Councilmember Porter, discussion.
Uh, oh. Go ahead, me.
Tell you.
No, go first.
Can't. Councilmember.
So yeah, this is, we're, we're accepting this money and I think this is gonna be a huge benefit for the City of Binghamton buying, we're gonna have this money to purchase the, the youth center from Saint Mary's in the center city area by, by Sardis Kirk Park. I think this is, this is gonna be a huge for our, our youth investment.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Oh, I was gonna say the same thing, I'm, I'm actually really excited about this. Uh, this money, this congressional award, I think it's gonna um, eventually shape Binghamton and programs like this will definitely help us and more importantly, children see things in a different lens who may not have the money or the resources uh, to do this, so this uh, amount is just a little bit, but also on, it, it's more important that us as community members, us as um, you know, council, you know, here representing our districts, that we also get involved and make sure that we are representing and doing the right thing for our youth, so that's all.
Thank you, oh, Councilman Strong.
I just wanted to say that, just to reiterate, um, I had put this in a press release a couple of years ago, but you know, the, the thanks to Senator Schumer and Senator Jill Brand for this um, for awarding this and in, in my mind, the, serving the youth in that area, um, you know, being involved now at the children's home with what we took over in Endicott, the, the old boys' club, it's, it's so important, obviously we have the the boys' club over on the, in the first ward, but I think this is phenomenal and, you know, in retrospect, might have got ahead of ourselves a little bit with the attempt to potentially, you know, go at it alone and build a whole facility, but I think the overriding factor was, you know, the youth in that area and what this will do for them. Um, we always thought, I know, you know, Councilman Burns and, and Councilmember Friedman and, and Riley and everybody that this was a better path, you know, but at the time, for some reason, there was resistance on the inner workings at Saint Mary's and this was always a better path to go and I'm glad that even though it took a couple extra years that we're here now and, and thankful for that funding for the, for that area.
Thank you, uh, any further discussion? Oh, Councilman Cap?
Yeah, I would just like to, to pick up on that thread and say that this is really a tremendous deal for the City of Binghamton that uh, trying to build a new facility was going to be six to seven million dollars uh, at least, and uh, we're getting this facility for five hundred thousand to purchase it and we have five hundred thousand to start the uh, sort of updating um, and kind of little bits of modernization, customization for it, so it's, it's really uh, a wonderful deal for the community, it's a great reuse of an existing facility, um, so it's uh, really win-win-win all around, I think.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Uh, I just wanted.
Councilmember Porter.
Yeah, I just want to thank Pat for fighting and trying to get this, uh, getting this. Yeah, listening to when he was up here speaking, uh, very passionate about it and I'm hoping he'll eventually come, come back, that would be best. Uh, so I, I want to thank him and everyone involved and this is very much needed, so.
Thank you. All right, with that, uh, I think the clerk can take a roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky.
Aye.
Seven zero.
The resolution passes. All right, now we move on to next we have introductory resolution twenty four dash seventeen, considered in planning, Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Like to make motion to adopt introductory res- resolution R twenty four dash seventeen, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement uh, to implement affordable housing project at Saratoga.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motioned by Councilmember Hotchkiss, seconded by Councilmember Dundon, discussion.
Yeah, this is.
Member Hotchkiss.
Sure, so the Saratoga housing is gonna be um, renovated and going into a, what I think is a kind of convoluted structure of um, financial ownership and then still maintaining city ownership with Binghamton Housing Authority, um, right now, they have been planning for this project to go forward, so there's now like empty, at least fifty empty apartments up in that um, housing development to plan for the, the renovation and um, kind of a different ownership model, I think this stems from HUD changing how it does its federal funding because it has been traditionally underfunding all the public housing uh, across the country and trying to move to like a semi-private nonprofit public model, which is um, pretty convoluted, but that's, that's what this is right now.
Thank you, any further discussion? Councilmember Porter.
When you say convoluted.
I personally.
Hotchkiss.
Yeah, I, I find the, the structure of the ownership and funding to be not as straightforward as just public housing. So when we have like a, a, a new like nonprofit entity and then and then a public entity and then like a private investment, it, I think it's less straightforward about like ownership and responsibility and yeah, rather than Binghamton owns this and we collect rent here and fund the, fund the maintenance and whatever.
Yeah, it, it, it just concerned me as well when we discussed it because uh, I did give an example in the Port News, uh, especially during the nineties of, the late nineties, they were dealing with private urban uh, investments and when that investment did not get through with the remodeling, people got displaced, so that was a big concern and they didn't really give an answer to that when I asked them about that, so that would concern for me as well. So.
Oh, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I mean, I, I, I have to respectfully disagree with Councilman Porter, I, I, this structure is the new, is going to be, is becoming the new norm across public housing. It's simply fact, I mean, if you strip it, if you strip away all of the complicated nature of everything, it's, it's the federal government deciding instead of a direct subsidy to housing authorities to run it through uh, sort of private development channels. But the buildings are still owned by a nonprofit entity, it's still controlled by the Binghamton Housing Authority. The developers step out after a set period of time. Um, and that's all in the uh, planning and execution documents for the uh, for the deal. Um, I think Bruce is a fairly responsible, he's done a number of these. Um, and they, you know, as far as guaranteeing, we asked very specific questions during the work session about the uh, the rights of return for these folks. Uh, about, you know, drilling down right to the, uh, as far as rent increases, drilling right down to, you know, how many people are, are paying less than their, less than even thirty percent of their income right now and we, we, we got to a number of around ten uh, ten households there that will, that might be facing a slight rent, rent increase because they're paying, you know, less than section eight uh, rates at this point. I, I, I think this is being handled uh, quite responsibly and it's, it's frankly the only way forward to update uh, Saratoga and eventually our other, uh, our other housing um, developments um, you know, in a responsible way, just because the, the federal funding model is broken right now and this is how they've chosen to fix it. So I uh, I appreciate that we were, I, I think we took uh, steps to ask questions, very serious questions, uh, you know, based, not in small part upon your concerns uh, and, and experiences that you, you, you had seen. Um, and I, I think, in, at least in my mind, they were, they were largely allied by uh, allied rather by um, by the answers we got from the Housing Authority and from the developer. That's all.
Thank you, any further discussion?
From my understanding, it knew what fifteen year. Supposed to be like fifteen, maybe twenty years, and maybe with the chance of a new developer. It was to say that the new developer might not.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
So the uh, what, the fifteen year timeline is the, if I remember correctly, maybe Sophie remembers better, maybe, no, maybe not, uh, fifteen year is the window in which the tax credits operate, that's what the developers are interested in, that's why they're in this. They get these uh, they get these development tax credits, um, so that is the window for that. So that's why they step out at that juncture.
Right, but once they.
Ripping forty to fifty.
So they made a guarantee to uh, don't quote me. They made it, yes, there's a fifty year something that he uh,
The pilots forty years.
Forty years.
They did lock down uh, what the rental rates will be for the forty year pilot, it is all locked in there.
There we go, thank you, Mike.
But it doesn't, but you can always get a new developer, correct, a new developer to come in?
No.
Okay, all right, I just.
I, I mean, I, I, if.
I mean, and once they get their tax credits, they, is it the hope that when they get their tax credits, they continue to stay on, is that what you're trying to do?
No, 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 the, the, the developer does the project, the renovations happen and then they step back. Binghamton Housing Authority runs the, runs it from then on, I mean, they're, they're, they're there to manage the renovation and then they, they step back and they take their tax credits and once the tax credit window, once those have all been dispersed, they have no interest left in the project and they, they back out. Or, it's, it's the developer, actually, it's the investor that's, that's there and backs out, which is usually a bank, sometimes a pension fund or insurance company.
Okay.
So uh, but yes, but we maintain local control, Binghamton Housing Authority uh, continues to administer and run all of the the whole facility.
Any further discussion? Okay, the clerk may call the roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky.
Aye.
It's seven zero.
The resolution passes. Um, all right, so now we have uh, introductory resolution twenty four dash eighteen, considered in planning, Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Like to make a motion to adopt introductory ordinance or introductory resolution R twenty four dash eighteen, this is a resolution approving the agreement for a pilot among City of Binghamton and Binghamton Saratoga One Housing.
Is there a second?
Oh. Carry on, next page.
Oh.
The, the Development Fund Company and Binghamton Saratoga One Limited Partnership, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motioned by Councilmember Hotchkiss, seconded by Councilman Strong. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
So the Housing Authority has paid a voluntary payment to the city. This pilot, since it, it's going to a from a government entity to a, to this, to the nonprofit structure, um, the pilot is structured along the, the same lines of the payments that they were previously making to the city, so this is substituting that uh, sort of dollar for dollar. Um, it's just being called a pilot now instead and it's uh, mandatory now, they, it used to be essentially voluntary.
Thank you, any further discussion? Okay, the clerk can call the roll.
Remember, Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Nay.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Medavetzky.
Aye.
It is six one.
All right, the resolution passes. Next, we have introductory resolution R twenty four dash nineteen, considered in municipal and public affairs, Councilmember Middleton.
I'd like to make a motion, um, it's actually, it's a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter, enter an, enter an agreement with the Salvation Army for the use of ARPA funds to support the community meals program at eighty six Walnut.
A second? Okay, motioned by Councilwoman Middleton, seconded by Councilman Dundon, discussion.
Um, so yeah, it's basically kind of um, the same thing that I spoke about before. Um, so yeah, it's basically kind of, um, the same thing that I spoke about before. This is just giving, um, the mayor authorization to enter in the, into the agreement for the Salvation Army, uh, with the use of ARPA funds.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, the clerk may take the roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky. Council President Matavetsky.
Aye.
That is seven zero.
The resolution passes. Uh, right. Introduct- next on the agenda, we have introductory resolution R twenty-four dash twenty, considered in finance. This bill no longer has the necessary out, therefore will not be booked on tonight. Next, we have introductory resolution R, oh. All right. Next, we have an introductory resolution R twenty-four dash twenty-one, considered in finance. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I'd like to make a motion to pass, uh, R twenty-four dash twenty-one, a resolution to correct the twenty-twenty-four tax rolls for various properties.
A second.
Showned by Councilman Kavanaugh, seconded by Councilwoman Middleton. Discussion. Councilman Kavanaugh.
Uh, so this came up as an, an item to be expedited at work session this week. It's, uh, an unfortunate and annoying thing that we have to do. Um, the, uh, as we found out, uh, there are consequences to not having a city treasurer, uh, keeping a closer eye on things. So the, uh, this is amending the uh, tax warrants that we send to the county to amend taxes for, uh, either excess, uh, water bills or garbage fines or neighborhood or property cleanup and what have you. Um, and there was, uh, a significantly larger issue reconciling those this year than in previous years. Uh, in large part, because the treasurer's office is understaffed and we don't have a treasurer right now. So, uh, the, uh, the rolls were not correctly reconciled and most of these, in fact, are things that were paid to the city and, uh, weren't correctly left off of, uh, the county rolls that were sent out. I do have a question. I don't see in the, Sophie, I don't see in the, in the legislation, the actual list of properties. It was in the work session packet. Does it need to be there or?
Should be as an attachment.
She said that it should be as an attachment.
It'll, it'll be there. Okay, it's, it's just not actually in the packet right now, but, but it'll be there.
Yeah, so it should be, when all things are finalized, it should be attached.
Okay.
For clarity, so that we, you know, you know what you're referencing.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, the clerk can take the roll.
Councilmember Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dundon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Matavetsky.
Aye.
It's seven zero.
Resolution passes. Uh, now we move on to, um, Council, uh, Councilmember, uh, comments. Thank you again to everyone that's come out to, uh, join us. So we'll start with, uh, District Seven, Councilmember Dundon.
So the only thing I want to talk about is trying to get more residents in District Seven to come out to the East Side Neighborhood Watch meetings. Those meetings are on the first Tuesday of every month at six P M. We meet at Hands of Hope Free Methodist Church on two seventy Robinson Street in Binghamton. And if anyone has any questions, they can email bing E S neighborhood watch at gmail dot com. That's B I N G E S neighborhood watch at gmail dot com. And I'd like more residents to come out so I can talk to more people one-on-one and face-to-face. Thanks. That's all I have.
Uh, Councilmember Strong.
Thank you, uh, President Matavetsky. Uh, not much. I just wanted to affirm, you know, some of the comments about the ATVs on Mary Street and Rush Ave. I see the ones, Mary Street near Vestal Ave. It's, 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 it's horrible. So hopefully, you know, we can actually police and, uh, and actually, you know, follow through on that. I mean, and a similar, no, I think we should add the, uh, illegal fireworks across the city on, on the Fourth of July. Um, but that's very hard to, to, to stop, but it's, 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 it's similar in the, well, it's not, it's, this is more, this is more pressing, but, um, just the noise and the, the, the safety alone is just, you know, to hold these people accountable, I think, is, is, uh, is going to be very important. So, um, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hotchkiss.
No communications tonight.
Uh, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
No communications tonight.
Councilmember Middleton.
I wa- I love this time. Um, it is March, so it is Women's Month. Yay to our women. Yay, 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 yay. Um, I just want to say that, um, to anybody that is watching, especially your, if you're a woman, we can do anything. Do not let anybody tell you that you can't. You are resilient. You are strong. Um, we can do anything because I'm here at a meeting and my daughter is up there. Uh, so we, we try to, uh, juggle every single thing that we can, but we can do it. Um, I want to encourage all women, young and old, especially my young women who may be watching this who, or who may see me and Hadassah in this position, that this can be you. Um, don't let anyone determine you. Don't let anyone say that you don't have the skills or the knowledge or anything. You can do anything. So that's just a shout out to my women on Women's Month. Thank you. Oh, also, um, second, uh, second and third district, tomorrow, me and Robert are gonna go look at a place um, to potentially have our neighborhood watch meetings. And then we'll discuss it on our pages for updates. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilwoman Middleton. Uh, Councilman Porter.
Um, I want to thank everyone who came tonight. Give out your public comments or, and also people who emailed as well. I feel, uh, one aspect of dealing with the ceasefires, uh, I'd rather be on the side of, we're against genocide, rather be for it. I also be on the aspect of looking at that. I know, I remember Rwanda and no one did anything. So I feel that, uh, as an American citizen, we should at least stick up for that. I appreciate that and that's, I had made a comment last time, so that, I think this should be suffice enough to say. I do also say, please, citizens of the first ward, please come to these neighborhood watches, especially if you're poor and white, you're poor and black. You have a bunch of people making decisions for you that you don't realize they're trying to screw you over. I just be honest about it. So they're just making decisions for you that is, you need to come and express your voice every second Tuesday of the month at six fifteen at Woodrow Wilson Elementary. Please come out. It would be nice to see people, more people of color. It, it'd be nice to see more people who are tenants who rent. Uh, because it seems like the people who are property has, uh, versus, uh, property versus, uh, tenants, property owners versus tenants. So please come out, express your views, express how you feel, express the, what your situations are within, within the community of First Ward. Uh, to speak on the ATVs, I do believe in safety for, for the most. I do believe in safety. Uh, I just think when you create laws to, for a blanket offense, you create laws and you blanket it, you tend to leave out the people disenfranchised as a risk. There are people who actually use some of these vehicles. Now, I understand these, the other vehicles that they, they shouldn't be having children on them. I understand that's not something they should be doing. Uh, I understand the safety issues of how small some of these vehicles are. That's awful. They should not be there. But there's other people in the community that use use bikes or hook them up with five C C motors and take them to work or to even get to a grocery store for some cases. Because we do have inadequate transportation within this city. So I'm all for safety. I just feel that we have to be very careful about how we blanket a law for all the, for the offenses. Uh, it should be some kind of resolution of dealing with punishing those, for some who are in offense as a punishing all. So that's what I have to say and I stand on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Porter. Um, is calling on myself. Um, we are still, we're getting towards the end of it, but we're still in the ninety days of learning. Um, so, uh, as part of that, some of the recent things that I've done that's outside of just dealing with the legislation that's coming at us, um, I, I missed the tour with many of you of the sewage treatment plant, but I did a, my own tour for about two and a half hours with the student, student sewage treatment plant, asking tons of questions and getting to know um, the people that work there. Um, and today I attended, uh, code court to see how things look once you get to the court part of, um, code violations and to learn a little bit about the types of people and the types of cases that are, are getting to that point. In terms of issues, so tomorrow is traffic board. Um, there's two topics that are up at traffic board that are, relate to, um, District Five. Um, so Woodland, um, and I wanted to thank the deputy mayor for working on this, um, and getting the letters out to everyone in that area. Um, will be voting on, um, whether or not we turn, uh, part of the street into a one-way street. Um, the letters went out to that whole area to get feedback. Um, and I, I really appreciate those efforts. Um, I will be presenting tomorrow on, um, Kane Ave. I've flyer'd up and down Kane, um, relating to what side of the street uh, the no parking signs should be on. Um, there was an issue a while back with, um, fire department ambulance not being able to get to a resident, which is why the no parking signs went in. Um, but they are on the side of the street. That means that cars are parked in front of mailboxes and mail isn't getting delivered. Um, so that's been an issue that I've been, um, digging into and, uh, will be presenting tomorrow, uh, traffic board. I continue to get feedback on ATV dirt bike issues. Um, I flyer'd portions of uh, Mary, the bottom part of my district and the top part of my district and, uh, Vine Street, the bottom and the top and part of Bayless, as people have been pointing out, different areas where there's been issues in the district. Um, I've been trying to flyer to make sure, um, I get feedback from as many people as possible. All right, uh, in terms of upcoming, uh, events in the district, uh, March fifteenth, so this Friday, um, there's free admission at the Discovery Center from four to seven P M. Um, while you're there, you can celebrate National Women's History Month. Um, they, they have a scavenger hunt and there's cool facts about historical women um, throughout the Discovery Center. Um, Ross Park Zoo has the egg extravaganza, March twenty-ninth to thirtieth. Southside Neighborhood Assembly hasn't posted their dates for this month, um, but if you go to their Facebook page, it's usually, um, towards the end of the month. So, um, keep your eye out there. Um, I want to do a thank you to our fire department for their response on, uh, Bayless. Uh, there was a fire there this week and to, um, our police department for their response to the ATV dirt bike situation at Benjamin Franklin. So, um, thank you all for coming out. Thank you to everyone who spoke, everyone who's listening, everyone who stayed till the end. Um, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
All right.
So, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?